We've taken a brief lunch, recess, and we are at the end of our agenda. And there will be, members will be allowed to give any remarks, brief remarks before we adjourn. So is there anyone who would like to start off? In alphabetical order. Okay, I have, so for brief remarks, we'll go ahead and start out then in alphabetical order. Senator Tom Attap, Senator Tom Attap for any brief remarks. Senator Tony Attap. Oh, that's gonna be a long one. Senator Frank Blas Jr., you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker. A lot of people would see, think this is probably a bittersweet moment, or a bitter moment, or a sweet moment. I'm a little lost. I can tell you that, when I started in this legislature, 29th, as I had stated earlier, I had the privilege and the honor of sitting next to a man that was the, that it continues to be the epitome of what a true statesman is. And in the short time that I was able to sit with him, I was able to glean a lot. And I will tell you that in everything that he guided me in and advised me on, not once did it ever fail me. Other than the, we joke about it, about his proverbial Chinese quote of, "Plenty talk, plenty problem; no talk, no problem", was his guidance and as well as suggestion and continuous recommendation to hear everybody out. And never be judgmental and always to look for the opportunities and the challenges. And we've had many challenges. And in the many challenges that we've always had to face, we always found the opportunities to make it better. I don't think there was ever a time in my term here in legislature that we walked out of here as a body and not felt like we did what was right for them and what was best for the people of Guam. That we didn't do what was best for them. We always, with what we had to consider, what we had discussed, what we had talked about, what we argued. It's been an honor and it's been a privilege. And most especially been an honor and a privilege to serve in this legislature with these colleagues. Because we faced a number of challenges together and came up with great opportunities. I will, though, with the many fond, good memories that I have of being here, also have to express, I guess one of the things, one of the, I guess, duties, for lack of a better term, that I wish we never would have had to go through and never would have had to do. And just to remind you all, us all, that I think that it's in this generation of government leaders and legislators that many of us, that we've had always the obligation and the duty to be there to greet and to see and to welcome home the body of a soldier who was killed in action in defense of our country. Madam Speaker, you and I have spent far too many early mornings, late nights, at the tarmac of the airport while we waited for and while we continued to pay respects to the body of the soldier who was coming home for their final time after being killed in action. And I remember one time having a discussion with the vice speaker about that. About how it was our gener, this is, it is our generation that has had to do this that the generations before us didn't. And I was, I hope and I pray that at the end of this term, as the 31st Guam Legislature ends its term, that the duty and the obligation for future members of this body will no longer be there to have to go to greet, greet the soldier one last time. I hope and I pray that my colleagues in the upcoming, incoming legislature don't have to go through that. You know, when we sit in here and as we discuss amongst ourselves policy, legislation, that can move mountains, and that has moved mountains. It's a very helpless feeling and it's a, it's a, it's, it's, you feel hopeless. There's nothing that you can do when you have to go there and say, "Welcome home, but goodbye." And as I say that, I'd like to pass on word of advice. If we think we have problems, what about those loved ones, those wives, those mothers, those sons, those daughters, who are no longer gonna have a shoulder to cry on, an ear to talk to, a wallet to pull from? What about them? We can resolve things. And let's spend every waking moment that we can, that we have, to be able to do that. And I think that if we do that, everything will be fine. To my colleagues on my side of the floor, thank you for giving me the honor and the privilege to serve as your leader. Thank you for times putting up with me. Thank you for being there for me. Thank you for being there for all of us. Thank you for the one time that all of you voted no on my amendment when I was the only one that voted for it. I had to bring that up, you guys knew I had to bring that up. Thank you for being the best team that I've ever been on. And to my colleagues in the majority, thank you for always being there too. Thank you for the arguments, thank you for the criticism, thank you for the advice, thank you for the support. And I say that with all sincerity, because ma'am, the people of Guam put us here to do what's best, and I think that as a group we have. And we have because there's a synergy, there's a synergy in this group. That's why I joked with you earlier, I said, "You really want all of us to leave?" It's been an honor and it's been a privilege, Madam Speaker. And to the, my colleagues. Happy belated New Year. Good luck in all of your endeavors, your future endeavors as continuing members of the 32nd and for other, for other, those of us who are gonna go off into other areas and into your future endeavors. God bless and God speed. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much, Senator Frank Blas. Senator Benjamin Cruz, Vice Speaker? Senator Cristhianias? Senator Guthertz?
Thank you, Madam Speaker and colleagues. Madam Speaker, first I have a couple housekeeping things to do on behalf of the Committee on the Guam Military Build-Up and Homeland Security. You may have read yesterday and received a notice that there's another draft EIS process going on. And this is for the Mariana Islands Range Complex. And I'd just like to pass out copies of and read the comments that I sent in today in order to ensure that views consistent with our position in the resolutions were transmitted, the legislative resolutions were transmitted to the Naval Facilities Engineering Command Pacific. So this is again directed to the Naval Facilities Engineering Command Pacific in Pearl Harbor regarding the Mariana's Islands Range Complex airspace EA OEA project. And these are official comments. On June 16, 2010, I submitted official comments on the draft EIS for the Mariana Islands Range Complex. Shortly afterwards, a record of decision was issued for this study. Now it appears that we are replowing fields that were plowed back in 2010. This new iteration appears to be duplicative of the work accomplished two years ago. Alternative one will modify existing military airspace and establish new airspace for safety and training efficiency to extend the restricted area at Feralinde Medidilla, or FDM, from three nautical miles to 12 nautical miles. Alternative two will modify and extend airspace as described under alternative one. It will expand the sea-space danger zone around FDM, which does have an impact here on Guam. The Navy has indicated that, based on a thorough assessment of environmental resources, there will be no significant impact on the environment from proposed modifications to air space and sea space. Absent definitive proof of the Navy assessment being seriously in error, we must take the Navy at its word. But I do have two comments that I hope will be considered as the Navy considers mitigating measures for this expansion of its restrictive areas for the Mariana's Islands Range Complex. First, I ask that the interests of the Guam fishermen be considered. Each expansion of restrictive measures over the ocean is another restriction on the fishermen's freedom to fish where and when they wish. Second, similar to my concern regarding further restricting, restricting access to fishing areas for people in Guam, I ask that the interests of the Commonwealth of Northern Marianas also be considered when the FDM restrictive area is considered. Consultation must be accomplished with the CNMI government. Not just the NEPA planning process, but policy-level officials sitting down in formal consultation as called for in the covenant that underlies the political relationship between the people of the Northern Marianas and the United States. I urge the Navy to read the covenant and follow through with the specific terms regarding official consultation. In summary, I commend the Navy for a thorough study in compliance with the NEPA process. This is a lengthy and costly process, and we appreciate the opportunity for providing input. One more point with respect to Guam. I am concerned that certain federal agencies wish to further reserve land in Guam for endangered species that no longer exist here, yet are abundant in other Pacific islands. This effort may prevent a live-firing range from being established to support the planned realignment of Marines to Guam. I recognize that the live-firing training range is absolutely needed for the Marines. If it comes to no range, then there will be likely be no Marines, all to save some habitat for a possible reintroduction of some endangered species that no longer exist. This issue must be resolved between the Department of Defense and the Department of Interior, particularly the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. If not, I am concerned that the Marine realignment to Guam may be in jeopardy. Madam Speaker, my second housekeeping activity. And this is addressed to all my colleagues here today. Buenos. With the inauguration of the 32nd Guam Legislature on January 7, 2013, my term as a member of the Guam Legislature will come to a close after six years of service as a Guam senator. I would like to express my sincere appreciation and thanks to all of you for your cooperation, assistance, and support during this time. Were it not for the help of many individuals and organizations in the community, both here and abroad, the challenge of continuing the work and effort of a senator would be and is truly an impossible task. The thoughtful ideas and suggestions from my colleagues and others shared with me have greatly improved my work as a senator on behalf of our people, and I want you to know how grateful I am for your help. Our islands' media outlets have performed well in gathering, reporting, and commenting on much of the legislative work initiatives I've been involved in as a senator. I appreciate their effort to engage the Guam community in helping to shape and develop public policy. It was truly a blessing to receive support and feedback during my service as a lawmaker. You can be certain that I will not be shying away from public service anytime soon and will continue to be actively involved in the community and with efforts to promote Guam as a great place to live and raise a family. That's a promise you can count on. Although my work in the legislature has varied with policies related to improving education as a lifetime educator and learner, public safety as a former Director of Public Safety and Acting Chief of Police, and our economy in an effort to promote a better quality of life for all the people of Guam, much of the focus of my office over these past few years have dealt with my support and recommendations for the Guam military buildup. As a chairperson of this inaugural committee of the Guam Military Build-Up and Homeland Security in the 30th Guam Legislature and the continued work in the 31st Guam Legislature, in all my workings with the military realignment effort to move Marines from Okinawa to Guam, my motto has been and will continue to be to promote one island, one people, and one quality of life for everyone who calls Guam home. A motto that has been characterized as a win-win approach. Colleagues, enclosed is a chronological history of events relative to the Guam military buildup as events unfolded regarding the ever-changing developments during these past few years. This chronology also documents the efforts of the Committee on the Guam Military Build-Up and Homeland Security and yours truly to try to help realize a win-win for everyone who calls Guam home, civilian and military alike. Took a lot of time and effort in putting this chronology together. It's an excellent history of the buildup to date. I'd like to ask our Sergeant Arms to please pass this out to every senator, because these are individually addressed to you, colleagues. As I depart from the Guam Legislature, I encourage those of you in Guam and in this legislature to stay actively involved in the buildup process and in general, all affairs affecting our island community. Always remember that our island, our culture, and our heritage are unique and beautiful. This is why I consider it a privilege to live on Guam and my civic duty and honor to stand with the people today, tomorrow, and forever. Guam is and always will be worth fighting for. I'd like to ask Sergeant Arms to please pass these out to our colleagues. Thank you. And Madam Speaker, the last housekeeping function before I actually say goodbye. If, if I may have the privilege, Madam Speaker, of presenting this to you. Madam Speaker, I'm gonna present to you through our Sergeant Arms. First, this is for incoming Senator, the Honorable Frank Augen, who I understand will be the Chair of the New Realignment Committee in Homeland Security, which will include the buildup, military buildup. Madam Speaker, included in this envelope are all the records of the Committee on the Guam Military Build-Up and Homeland Security digitalized, all of the records. I believe that this information will be very valuable to the committee and to members of the committee and to the 32nd Guam Legislature as a group. This set is for the Honorable Frank Augen, and I'd like to request, Madam Speaker, with your support, that this be transmitted to Senator Augen, Senator-elect Augen, as he takes office on Monday.
I will, thank you very much.
And Madam Speaker, for you, Madam Speaker, I'm pleased to provide you also with a complete digital set of all my documents pertaining to the Committee on the Guam Military Build-Up and Homeland Security for your use and for the archives of the 31st Guam Legislature. I am hopeful that this collection of information will be of continued value to the 32nd Guam Legislature and to the people of Guam. Hard copies, the hard copies I had for all this material are being transmitted to the Microvision Area Research Center at the University of Guam for availability to anyone and everyone who wishes to utilize research and have access to the information. Madam Speaker, having done the housekeeping functions with the committee, officially transmitting the records of the committee and the last initiated document from the committee to Naval Facilities Command and the chronology of the Guam military buildup to date, I'd like to thank each of you, every senator here. I want to thank every single employee of this legislature. You are outstanding. You come to work every day, you dedicate yourself to the people of Guam. You do your part to make this branch of government work. We are very lucky, Madam Speaker, that we have these employees working with us every day. I cherish their help, I cherish their friendship, I will never forget them. My colleagues, you are very special people. I've learned a lot here. You know, I thought I knew a lot, having been a teacher for 28 years. But I didn't know the first thing about the legislature, really, till I got here and realized this is not a simple place to be. This is a very difficult place to be. Takes a lot of work, a lot of commitment, a lot of communicating. And most of all, it takes integrity. Integrity and stamina to stand up for the people of Guam, not be pushed in a corner, not be bought out by special interests, but to always do the right thing. And I can tell you, Madam Speaker, as a member of this body, certainly I'm not perfect, but I always did the right thing. I never betrayed the people, I always did my best for the people of Guam. And I thank them for having me, giving me this opportunity. It's been a wonderful opportunity. I have no regrets, I feel good, and I am very much indebted to the people of Guam for allowing me these past six years to represent them here. I want to ask my colleagues, those that will be returning, please stand up for this legislature. Stand up for the institution of government on our island. Don't let it be chipped away, decimated, and replaced with special interests. Don't let it be chipped away, decimated, and replaced with special interests. This government, since 1950, has helped to contribute to a middle class on our island, to a better quality of life of our people. And every single employee of this government that goes to work every day tries their best to do right by our people. They should never feel uncomfortable about being a government employee or feel that they are portrayed badly when in fact they are committed to the island and to the honor integrity of the institution of government. As I leave you, as I've said before, I'm only a phone call away. If anyone ever needs any advice or would like some help, volunteer help, I'm always nearby. I want to thank my close office mates, Senator Spieso and his staff. You know, we've shared staff. We've shared Zara's machines. We've shared everything in our two offices. And he was quite a teacher, really. Taught me a lot about the legislature. And I think I've taught him a lot too. But I value Senator Spieso's friendship. I value all your friendship. I'm very proud of my former student and the man who I pinned with a police badge a number of years ago, Senator Frank Bloss. He's a great person, a great man. I'm proud of my colleague, Senator Palacios. I was his chief. I was his director when he was a police officer. He's an outstanding individual. Mana, you have a wonderful future ahead of you. You're a smart, vibrant person. And I want to thank you for all the great legislation you brought here and for helping us understand the views of those in your generation. Thank you. Sam, you are an educator. You developed bills that this island needed for career education to help our people find ways to get trained for better jobs in the future. Those bills that are law will have a long-time impact in this community. This legislature will miss you, but you will not be forgotten. It's hard to say goodbye, Speaker. It's very hard. And since the election day, I've been preparing for today. I've been keeping myself busy. I've kept my staff busy till the very last minute. And I'm prepared now. I have about seven boxes to load up in my truck today. I'm prepared to do that, and I'm prepared to leave. But I just want to say thank you very much. Sis Maasi, everybody. God bless you. I will never forget you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Guthers.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I knew this was going to be a very emotional time for me, for many levels. I've made many good friends. I've accomplished what I set out to do. And as such, I thank all my fellow senators and the governor, especially for passing very important bills that I've been very passionate about, like the CARE Act, the College and Career Redness Act. Now, I know it hasn't always been easy, especially having had been a freshman senator. It's been what we call in workforce development, OJT, under job training a lot. It's also been experiential learning. There are days when it can feel like it was a thankless job, but I have to confess, it's been so truly rewarding. I never lost focus of the fact that I serve and represent each and every person on Guam. Now, it's been an honor and pleasure serving the people of Guam alongside a very fine group of senators. I call it the great 31st Guam Legislature. And believe me, I couldn't have picked a better legislature to be in to have the opportunity to affect some of these changes in areas that I've always been passionate about since the 1990s. It's the very reason why I ran for senator. And I'm pretty sure it's clear to everyone here, to those who have been paying attention to our work the last two years, that my key focus has always been about improving how we prepare our students and adults to be successful in their college and their careers. You know, I just came back from a national conference in Atlanta, Georgia, on career and technical education. On a side note, there were signs all over the place that said SEC. And I thought, wow, the Security Exchange Commission is here. But I found out it was about football, right? It was the Southeast Commission, so I got corrected. But anyways, I was there at that conference. And it was very, it was made very clear to me and everybody in that conference. There were thousands of educators, policy leaders, who are in this field that nationally and locally here in Guam, we have to continue the fight to improve how we prepare our students, how we make sure that our adult workers, our young and adult workers enter the careers and jobs and receive the training that they need to be successful. So I hope and I appeal to the 32nd Guam Legislature to please be diligent, continue working to help reduce our dropout rates, help increase our graduation rates, and to help track and increase our job placements. And that means also supporting new industry in Guam. The month of January has always been special to me. Not only was I born in this month, but the past few of Januaries have been special. Why? In January 2011, I was sworn into the 31st Guam Legislature. In January 2012, Governor Eddie Calvo signed the CARE Act, Public Law 31156. This leveled the playing field, allowing all our students to start receiving the same quality classes and guidance that they need to prepare them to go into their college, their training, and careers. This is what they have to do in order to succeed in this world. And that's all I've been studying. That's all I've been dreaming. That's all I've been wanting for our people. Now, in January 2013, I'm proud to retire from probably the best legislature in the history of Guam. I want to thank again all my fine colleagues, including my minority leader, the speaker, vice speaker, secretary, majority leader, every single senator in the 31st Guam Legislature. I also want to thank my awesome staff, who stuck it out with me till the very end, Miracle McGol and Val Gonzalez, and all the incredible staff members of the legislature. And I apologize for those who I may have forgotten to mention. I also want to thank Governor Eddie Calvo for supporting my legislations, for sharing the same visions that I have, my visions, same visions that many of us have, to improve education, to improve the livelihoods of all our workers. I want to part with two quotes. "There is no happiness except in the realization that we have accomplished something." That was by Henry Ford. Having been the first Filipino senator, I can now check that off my bucket list. The second quote I'd like to share is what I've always had in the bottom of my communications, again by Henry Ford. "Coming together is the beginning. Keeping together is progress. And working together is success." And I wish that for the 32nd Guam Legislature. I'm very thankful for the privilege of serving the people of Guam. Maraming salamat sa mga kababayan at kapamilya ko. I hope I have served you well. Thank you.
Senator Munia Barnes, Senator Palacios.
Sis Maasi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, as I look around, I don't see anyone with a crime towel, so I'll go easy in my presentation. Not even a box of Kleenex, so no, you won't be tearing. In all seriousness, Madam Speaker, half a day and to my fellow colleagues, I rise today to express my most sincere sis Maasi for having served as one of the members of the legislature, for working in the third branch of government, the cornerstone of our government. I have been honored, Madam Speaker, to be a member of the Guam Legislature for the last eight years. It has been an incredible journey that I never imagined I would take since immigrating to Guam from Saipan about more than 50 years ago. That was in the early 60s. Now, from a humble beginning as a construction worker following the recovery effort of Typhon Carrion in 1962 to being a stevedore following that period for the next five years, and then having served as a policeman in Guam for 20 years, and now as a senator for the last eight years, I say that is the cap on my, that is the feather on my cap, so to speak. Madam Speaker, my journey has been many things to me. Above all, it has been the most, the single most important opportunity for me to help our people, especially those who are skeptical of our government's ability to provide good and honest public service, as well as those who are in need of a helping hand because of serious medical and financial issues. Over the last eight years, I've enjoyed every opportunity to work with you, Madam Speaker, and my fellow colleagues, addressing some of the most important issues at hand, from strengthening Guam's public safety and justice agencies to preparing our island for the unprecedented changes that's coming before us. I firmly believe that the work we have done together represents the interest of the ordinary citizen who simply want a government that is honest, responsive, and fair and which upholds the true principles of democracy. As a senator, my office has always been open to everyone, regardless of stature, Madam Speaker. People can be bicycling into my office, can come in taxis, can be driven over there. It does not matter. They all are the same in my eyes, and they're all welcome in my office. I have done my best to use my office to help other people, to help our people, to open lines of communications between and among citizens, agency directors, and yes, of course, even with other elected officials. Madam Speaker, to me, my position as a senator and my office for that matter serves its greatest purpose when it helps ordinary citizens, those who are in need of help, those whose voices are not heard. I enjoy doing those things, and it is an honor to be in that situation where advice and direction and guidance is sought from my office. Madam Speaker, I wish to thank you and my fellow colleagues, most of whom I have served with in the last eight years, in fact, for the outstanding working relationship we have shared. I thank you for the meaningful and healthy discussions and debates. Despite our occasional differences, at the end of the day, we have never lost sight of our true purpose as a public servant, and that is to leave behind a stronger and more prosperous Guam for this generation and the future generation. And I also like to thank my incredible legislative staff, Madam Speaker, Jason Presilia, Bendigayo, Jennifer Berlin, Kena, Irene, and Winston. And last but not least, former senator and Senator-elect, my good friend Frank Augen, who has always been my mentor in public service. Thank you, my friends, for being a part of a team of a working senator. And thank you for helping me help countless individuals who place their trust and confidence in us, in our office, and in our sincere desire to help them with their concerns. And I wish to thank my wife, of course, Odessa, my children, and my entire family for their unyielding support during the last eight years. They all mean the world to me, Madam Speaker. Every honor, every ounce of gratitude that I have in service to others belong to them. I give them credit for that. And Madam Speaker, I wish to close this remark by thanking the people of Guam. Thank you, my dear people, for giving me the most honorable opportunity to serving you and your families as your senator for eight years. We might at times during the last eight years disagree on some issues, but we have done it with good heart and with deep respect for one another. Though I live this body with a heavy heart, I also live with this body with many friendships and with cherished memories that I will never forget. And with that, sis Maasi, may God bless our families, may God bless our great and beautiful island of Guam, and may God bless the 32nd Guam Legislature. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Speaker Fangalina, Senator Spieso.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, a lot has been said this morning, this afternoon, rather, and you can tell by every single word that was expressed and the manner it was expressed. You can tell, Madam Speaker, that these words come from the heart. It comes from the heart, and it's representative of the kind of legislative body that we've had over this last term. And I want to rise to echo the sentiments of our minority leader and to ask you again, are you sure you want this group to leave? And I know that the question posed to you was a question that was beyond your control. And I think that's what I wanted to talk about this afternoon, is there are many instances that we find ourselves that we have been in those instances that the decisions or the actions are not of our own doing, but it's been beyond our control. I want to start by recognizing my good friend and colleague, my office mate, Senator Guthers, who joined this legislature at a time when I was serving my first term as a member of the minority. Having gone from a majority to minority, I've only had enough lapses to carry my staff while I was a member of the minority. And then when she got elected, Madam Speaker, she was very gracious. She said, "I got elected. I'm grateful. I'm thankful. I want to do what I can to help, and I don't want to hurt people, Rory. So what can I do to help?" And so the offer was made, and I asked her if we can do things a little different in this legislature. And I know it's been done to a certain extent. But if you understand the kind of working relationship that Senator Guthers and I have had, I think it's unorthodox and unusual. And a lot of you wonder how we're both able to do it because it's hard to have two senatorial offices come together as one, to do whatever's necessary to carry each other's shortfalls. When she joined us in the legislature, her first term, we teamed up with Senator Barnes, and we went and we looked for office space that could be the size of two offices, but we put three people in there, three senatorial offices into the space of two. We shared resources. We had one receptionist. We had one power bill, one water bill. We had one fax machine. We had one cable line. We had one internet service. But if you look at the three offices, the two ladies got the better of the three, and I was stuck in the corner right next to the bathroom. But Madam Speaker, we made it work. We made it work with whatever staff we had. If you look at the kind of working environment, the desks were so close together because we didn't have the space. And we went through that for one term. And then when we were able to, also in that term, through the untimely and unfortunate and tragic passing of our most senior member here in the legislature, the same gentleman that our minority leader talked about, and then we had the special election, and Senator BJ was elected in that special election. Senator Tina moved over, and then Senator BJ took that office space without any question or regard to where he was going to go, where his people were going to go. So these were three offices put into the space of two, working as one. And when we resumed the majority, Madam Speaker, through your leadership... And when we resumed the majority, Madam Speaker, through your leadership, we inherited a $500,000 projected shortfall. And that shortfall was a result of going from eight majority committees to 10, and other budget cuts at that time. And through your leadership and through the work of every single member at that time, and through doing things where we have to just pull our resources together, Senator Guthers and I, we put the space of two committee staff space into the space of one. Two majority offices in the space of one. And what that resulted is in Senator Guthers, by her being in this building, by us being a little bit cramped, it resulted in $72,000 worth of savings to this legislature. What also happened is Speaker Pangolinan, who is entitled to a rental budget outside because he's maintaining an office space outside, he forego that $3,000 a month allotment, so we can add that to our savings. We had a reduced allotment to the committee budgets, we had reduced allotments to the minority budgets. We do, we have done so many things over the last four years in particular to make more with less and continue to ask more of our employees. And when we transitioned from the minority to majority, some staffers still kept back because, as Senator Guthers said, "We don't want to hurt people." During that time, when we had the legislative hassle about six weeks as to whether eight is more than seven, and in working closely with our good friend and colleague Senator Blas, we didn't want to take over the committees, Madam Speaker. We just said, "For the next nine months or so, let the legislature be reflective of the will of the people, and if they collectively elected eight Democrats, then let the speaker be Democrat, let the vice speaker be Democrat, let the legislative secretary be Democrat." And that's what this legislature did. And so we didn't want to take over the committee structure because we didn't want employees to be thrown out in the street unexpectedly and not by their own choosing, not by their own doing. When we had a member of the majority resign, Madam Speaker, he had some positions at Central. We kept them for about two terms. We didn't want them to be thrown out, not by their own choosing, not by their own doing. And for those Central staff at the time that weren't rehired, Senator Guthers used her slots, Madam Speaker, to pick those people up. She had no political connection to these people. She had no political connections to my staff from the very beginning, who she said, "I want to do to help. I want to do to help, so use my budget, but just help me, Rory, just help me." And that's the kind of message that I want to impart to the people of Guam as to what's been happening here in the legislature. And in this last campaign, you've heard me say that it was not like any ordinary election was like the Hunger Games. And that's why you didn't have one single member of this body attack this body. That's why you did not have one single member of this body, particularly a single member of the minority, say that this institution is bad, that the Democrats are just for Democrats, that Republicans are just for Republicans. It would have been a huge political opportunity, Madam Speaker, a huge political opportunity for members of the minority to say those things and do those things and get the majority for the upcoming term that we would begin on Monday. Not that I'm suggesting that for the next election, but what I'm trying to instill upon every single one of us is you even had a minority leader who was a better Democrat than some Democrats, Madam Speaker. When they attacked the five of us, so-called Fab Five because of our position on the buildup, he and Senator Tony Ada went to Washington, D.C., met with Senator John McCain's staff, met with high-ranking members of the Republican Party in Washington, D.C., and asked, "What can Guam do to move this military buildup forward?" And the response they got was, "The Department of Defense has to submit a master plan." And so when he issued a press release to that effect because it was truthful and it was factual, I thought, "Well, the same, it's no wonder why that man that he holds in high regard, who's been his mentor, who is a representative of what a statesman should be like, it's no wonder why it was easy for him to do that." Because if, by doing that, it kind of alleviated some of our pressures to try to defend ourselves and say it wasn't anything that was said or done, or not said, not done, on a local level, that caused this buildup pause. But more so, it was what was happening on a national level. It was what was happening because of the Department of Defense's inability to submit a master plan. It was because the Department of Defense puts out an environmental impact study that identifies the worst-case scenario that purports to increase our population by about 60,000 people over a span of a couple of years, that purports to have a buildup that would cost about $15 billion, which caused several members of our business community to only look at the dollar signs, and to believe in their mind and in their hearts that we're going to have this kind of buildup with $15 billion injected in the community without any regard to the truth, without any regard to the truth that this buildup in the beginning was only going to be on the military base, until we said that it has to benefit the civilian community, until Senator Guthers, through her leadership in the Military Committee, and through also our efforts in going to Washington, D.C., resulting in Undersecretary Works Principles of Four Pillars, resulting in President Obama saying that we would have one buildup that would benefit both communities, it would be a one Guam, Green Guam. Even after all of those things were being said on a federal level, those individuals who wanted to take that $15 billion to the bank, they weren't going to believe any of that. But because they wanted someone to blame, they blamed certain members of this legislature. And if not for our minority leader and Senator Ada to go to Washington, D.C., to really get to the bottom of what was the cause of this buildup pause, I think you'd have saw, you would have seen more senators not reelected into the incoming legislature, myself included. And so while I'm grateful and humbled to the people of Guam for despite all of the things that were thrown at us and giving me another two years to serve as a member of this legislature, I'm also very grateful, Madam Speaker, to our colleagues here and to their willingness and to their passion in wanting to stand up for our branch of government to ensure that it's separate but co-equal and to maintain it as a third equal, separate but co-equal branch of government and to maintain our relevance. And that's been your edict since the day you've taken in the helm of the speakership that, you know, we have to have this check and balance, and we have to have accountability, we have to have transparency. I don't think the people of Guam has elected any one of us to be rubber stampers. And because we're not rubber stampers, we get the brunt of all this misinformation. And I want to appeal to our local media to try to work harder at getting at the truth, to try to be a little bit more fair when it comes to reporting business of the legislature. I'll give you an example, the bill that we just passed, when that bill was introduced, the media was reporting it that we're only going to repeal the salary cuts to the judiciary. So you take a look at the blogs as a result of the story that said, "Law introduced to repeal new law." And so now the comments are, "Why are we just doing this for the judiciary?" But if you would take the time to read the bill, it was not just for the judiciary, it was for every unclassified employee that was facing this 10% cut. So I don't know if there's anything more that can be said or that can be done to get the truth out, to try to make people play by the rules and to be fair. I just want to say that through our own experiences, I think it's made us grow, regardless of what the outcome of the last election was. I think in every single instance, I think I see significant changes in all these candidates in the past elections. I want to recognize our other good friend and colleague, Senator Palacios, who admits it, he's the oldest member here at the legislature, but he works as if though he's the youngest. He's the hardest-working member of this body, and I'm not ashamed to say that, I'm not afraid to say that, because it's true. All of us are hardworking, but Senator Palacios, you see him all the time in his work in dealing with the different law enforcement agencies. And also, I think it's unfortunate that these law enforcement officers have not regarded him as a champion of their causes. He has, he has. But how is it that one member of this body, or how is it that this body as a whole should be blamed for not following through on the law enforcement pay in additional 20% when that matter was not budgeted by the administration? When the administration chose to pay meritorious bonuses instead of recognizing that law? How is it now that it was because of one member's inaction or this body's inaction? It's just that the administration is not following through with what they're supposed to do. And they're not, at the very least, Madam Speaker, they're not being honest to say they can't do it. If the governor cannot pay this, he has not budgeted it. And because he didn't budget it, then we have our Chair of Appropriations trying to articulate the position of the legislature. But to be just bombarded by all of these press releases and no help to the media because nobody's doing any fact-checking or requiring that press releases that are released by government employees, by elected officials, that they sign that these statements are true under penalty of perjury? I got chastised by the media when I introduced a bill to require that. And I thought for once, our media would be happy that we're doing something that will promote transparency and accountability and make sure that people who are saying things are willing to say it despite any criticisms or despite that it may not be, that it be said under penalty of perjury. But apparently, they didn't like that. Madam Speaker, I also want to give my appreciation and bid my farewells to our other good friend and colleague, Senator Mano Silva Tyron, who has served her first term in the legislature and who also recognizes what the legislature has to do and have to reconcile those kinds of public obligations with just the right to privacy and just being in a very unfortunate situation that was beyond her control, beyond anybody's control. I mean, when you go through trial by media and trial by public, it's just the most god-awful feeling. And I want to continue to express my support for her and my praise for her and her husband and her family, that at the end of the day, the truth will come out, just as the truth came out for Senator Palacios when he was involved in that incident where he said, "I did not hit that vehicle." But again, trial by media, trial by press, trial by public, he had his day in court, and that case was dismissed. But unfortunately, it was dismissed after the election. So, Madam Speaker, I want to say goodbye also to Senator Sam Mabini to say that it's been a pleasure to work with her in this legislature and to bring those issues of workforce development to the forefront. And if you want to look at one senator other than probably Senator Tom Ada, who really tries to stay within his committee jurisdiction, I think Senator Mabini is the one also who's done 99.9% of her legislation dealing with workforce development, with career dance placement and making sure that GovGuam employees are given the skills test so they can be properly positioned. And so, you know, Madam Speaker, we could say a lot about every single member of this legislature. And believe me, my feelings towards every single member is just the same. I'm very happy to have had this experience, to work with all of you. But I want to pay special attention to Senator Yamashita also, who gave me that 10th vote for the election reform. And while she probably doesn't want me to remind people that she voted for this because people weren't happy, I want to remind people that she stood up for free and fair elections. And if there's any legacy that she's already given to the people of Guam, you can start with that one. She wasn't afraid, Madam Speaker, the pressure was on. We all know what it's like to get pressure. But when the pressure is on, so much so that people are saying, "If you don't do this, this will happen." But she still, she still voted for the override, and we're going to get to the bottom of what happened in past elections, and we're going to make sure that we're able to rise above it and move forward and make sure that those things don't happen again. And so I want to close also by paying special recognition to the Central staff, to our attachés, to the clerk, to the deputy clerk, to the legal counsel, Madam Speaker, to the sergeant-at-arms, to the chief financial officer, to the executive director, and to every single member of the Central Committee. You know, it's one thing to say that session is the priority, which it is, but it's another thing to recognize that while we're in session, a lot of things happen in and outside of session. And on top of having to do 25 to 40 bills a week, they're still processing resolutions, they're still doing things that's required of them. And on top of that, I'm especially grateful because they've been able to reduce the power bill of this legislative building from what was historically $22,000 a month to, since the time we took over as a majority, it hovered around $14,000 or $15,000 a month. And so, having said that all the things that we've done to not only be a separate but co-equal branch of government, to recognize that we do have problems financially in this government and that we are doing our share, Madam Speaker, and we are doing more than less. Our budgets keep getting cut, the court's budget keeps getting cut, the executive branch budgets keep going up. And so to recognize all of our efforts in this branch, I'm hoping that the people of Guam do recognize that they are getting a good deal for this work that this branch of government is doing to better the quality of lives of the people of Guam. And again, I'm humbled and grateful to be given this opportunity and that we will continue to work together and that we will continue to ask the governor what we can do to work with him in the upcoming term. And again, I salute you, Madam Speaker, and I applaud you for your leadership. And all of these successes are your successes, Madam Speaker, because these are what you've required of us since the last four years that you've been Speaker. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to extend these remarks and to bid our colleagues, all of our colleagues, well in the coming months. Thank you, Asesino Marci.
Senator Rodriguez.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, on Monday as well, I'll be retiring two titles. One of them is the new kid on the block, and the other one is the youngest member of the legislature. As we know, that Senator-elect Mike S. Nicholas would be the youngest member. But really, in all seriousness, Madam Speaker, this is my first term in the Guam Legislature, and I really, first and foremost, you know, need to praise and thank my almighty Father up above for giving me the opportunity and the strength to be able to serve our people. I thank our people, of course, for placing me and giving me their faith and trust to be able to represent them. But here, most especially what we're doing here today, Madam Speaker, is really closing a chapter, the 31st Guam Legislature. And I want to, of course, bid farewell and recognize the colleagues of ours who are leaving. Senator Sam Mabini, Senator Frank Blas Jr., who I respect very well, Senator Mano Silva Tyron, Senator Judy Guthers, and of course, Senator Adolfo Palacios, who is my co-chair of my committee all the way up to Monday. And Cap, you'll be my co-chair all the way, you know, until the end. But I want to thank Senator Palacios. He's really, you know, he's taking me under his wings, being a new member of this body. And as, you know, very simple things, as, you know, showing me how public hearings are run, giving me a template to say, "Okay, this is what, this is what you can use, you know, when you do your public hearings." And, you know, I want to thank him. I want to thank him, you know, for doing that for me. And so, you know, we heard today some talk about how we need to ensure we protect the institution, and that's true, and I support that. But I want to recognize- But I want to recognize and also thank our members here for supporting me in our efforts. I want to thank our legal counsel, Attorney Therese Terlahi, for helping me pursue this matter that was taken up against the Guam Legislature by one of the instrumentalities of government of Guam. What that case did, it went up to the Supreme Court, was protect, really, this institution's ability to say that we want to make sure that we have an open and transparent government, that we have the right to know what is happening with our government, and be able to show this to our people and to represent our people the way we should. And so, you know, that's an accomplishment of this body, Madam Speaker. And so, you know, I want to thank you as a speaker, and our next speaker as well in the next term, I look forward to, of course, our next term. But I want to thank also the staff, staff here at Central, the people that make it work, the clerk's office most especially, as you know that we've done a lot of proceedings in the clerk's office, you know, the resolutions, Pat, you know, and the certificates. I want to thank you and your staff for that, you know, and these recognitions that we do, Madam Speaker, a lot of times, these come from the public. Let's say, you know, we want the recognition from our leaders. And so, you know, I've always, I said that this is the way we can make our island a better, a special place when we recognize our people. And so that is, I want to let my colleagues know that that is well-received and well-appreciated by our people. And so, of course, I can't miss in thanking, you know, my own staff in my office, I want to thank them for, a lot of them have been new, you know, they were just like me, new kids on the block in this, in this part of government. But I want to thank them, of course, I want to thank my family. You know, in public service, Madam Speaker, now I know how difficult it really is. When you were outside, you know, looking in, it's so easy to be able to say, you know, "You people there are not doing what you're supposed to do, you know, you don't earn the salary that you guys get." But I know, I'm in here now, and I know, and I want to tell those people out there that it's not, it's not the way they portray it to be. And so we have new freshman centers coming in, and so they will be able to see it as well, the way I saw it. And so, but really, Madam Speaker, I want to thank you, I look forward to the 32nd Guam Legislature. I want to thank my family, as I said, my wife, most especially, who supported me and my children, and really look forward to carrying on the work and desires of our colleagues who won't be with us in the 32nd Guam Legislature. And rest assured, you know, to them that we will follow through on what initiatives that they would like to see pursued for the betterment of our community. So, thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, it wasn't too long ago that I closed a chapter on a big part of my life, a big chapter in my life, and here I am again today, closing the chapter on this part of my life. And it's been, it's been a good, it's been a good chapter and a blessing to be here. And as I close the door and as I turn the page, I have to say and let you all know that I'm really excited about what tomorrow brings for me. I don't know what it is yet, but I know that it's going to be good. I just know that it's going to be good, because God's plan is not to harm us, it's to prosper us, and I believe that. But you know, I want to thank you all for being the professionals that you are, the statesmen, because when I ran for election, I heard from everybody in the community, "It's a wicked game. You're too nice for that game. They're going to stab you in the back." They're all out for themselves. But I tell you what, being in this body, I've seen that it's not about that. I've seen 15, 14 other people who have hearts, who have consciences, who really love and care for our people and want to do the very best for our island. And it has been such an honor and such a privilege to work alongside every single one of you. And I've learned a lot, and it's not about partisan politics, none of, not at all. You, Madam Speaker, have been so gracious and so helpful, sitting right next to me, offering advice and counsel. Senator Ruscicchio, helping me out along the way with the rules and helping me learn how to do it the right way. My minority leader. Every single one of you have played such a big role in how I've progressed in the last two years, so I want to thank you for that. You know, it is, it's a real hard-working sacrifice, and like Dr. Jay had said, it's about endurance. It's absolutely about endurance, because not only are we working long hours, we have to listen to the public, of course. We get chastised by the media, who has their agendas, and really, there's nobody keeping check on them. But we still have to follow our hearts, and we still have to do our jobs. But let's not forget that the families that are at our houses are also sacrificing and having to read the blogs and believe what people, strangers, are assuming about us Our families are also sacrificing. So you know, I want to thank you all for sacrificing so that you could serve, because this isn't a lucrative job. It's a job, and it's very, very hard. And for all of your sacrifice, I want to thank you. And for those people who, the so-called career politicians, thank you, thank you, for year after year, putting your families and yourself and your personal lives on hold so that you could serve the people of Guam. I want to thank you. It's not about making millions here, it's about serving our people. So thank you to all of you and to all of your families. Madam Speaker, I am grateful for this opportunity, and I do want to thank the people of Guam, thank my colleagues and my staff, Therese, Matt, Frank, and Jermaine, for all of their assistance and all of the support of the legislative staff. I appreciate everything, and to my colleagues. God bless you all.
Anybody else who I may have missed? Senator Ruscicchio for a motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, at the conclusion of this session, I move that we adjourn, subject to the call of the Speaker.
On that motion, without any objections, ordered. We are adjourned.